I'd like to open the meeting at 7:03. Transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 22, 22A, 20, let me see, here, much better, 23, 23A, 24 and 24A. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Selkman O'Connell, second by Selkman Semaglia. All those in favor? And it's unanimous. We have no minutes to be approved this evening. However, our first appointment at 7 o'clock, I see Mr. Gleason in the audience, Verizon New England. Public hearing on request of Verizon New England Inc. and Redding Municipal Light Department to place one pole on Concorde Street. Good evening, Mr. Gleason. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason. I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England Inc., office located 20 Shattuck Road in Andover. The petition before the board this evening is a request from Verizon and Redding Municipal Light to place what's called a midspan pole, approximately 258 feet easterly of the Woburn Street intersection on Concord Street, and the pole would be placed on the southerly side of Concord Street. The purpose of this midspan pole is going to serve two reasons, two purposes. One is, it's going to help raise up the lines at that particular location, and the reason we need to raise up those lines at that particular location is, there is a new subdivision going in at that location called Cheyenne Estates. So what will happen is, is that Verizon and RMLD will be able to run service off of the new midspan into the new subdivision, and the pole will also help to raise up the wires so it won't interfere with any trucks or any larger vehicles going in to the subdivision. As a footnote to this, when we filed this petition, I believe the town had, someone in the town, maybe in your Director of Public Works, had intimated that this location, because of its proximity to Route 93, may be a state-maintained location. I've asked the engineer to inquire of Mass DOT whether in fact, this is a state-maintained area. Generally, state-maintained areas are all state roots, you know, root numbers 62, 129, things like that. So we weren't sure if this area on Concord Street was state-maintained. It may very well be, given its proximity to Route 93. That being the case, if this is state-maintained, then the jurisdiction for a grant of location would then lie with Mass DOT, and not with the board. However, as a matter of course, Verizon, whether it is state-maintained or whether it's within the jurisdiction of the local body politic, we always petition the town. So regardless of whose jurisdiction this is, we would always come before the local body politic, ask them for permission to place, hear if there are any butter concerns and whatnot, and then take those into consideration. We don't, I don't think the term pulling rank is the right term, but we would never pull rank on something like this. We would say, "Well, we don't need the board's approval. We'll just go to Mass DOT, get our license, and do what we need to do." We don't do that. If there are butter concerns, if there are selectmen, we take those into consideration before we proceed with anything. So whether it's state-maintained or not, I don't know at this point, but I would still request of the board of an affirmative vote to allow Verizon to place the pole at the location as requested. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before I go to the membership, Jeff, is there any input from the department heads or any concerns?
No concerns from the departments, no.
Any questions from the membership at all? Anybody? Well, this is a public hearing. I will go to the audience. So if there's any butter pertaining to this matter before the board of selectmen, you know, you're welcome to speak. Any butters relative to this agenda item? Because it is a public hearing. See that there's no butters here and there's no questions. I'll just go back to the membership. Is there any questions, comments, or motions pertaining to the appointment this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we read the request as set forth in the agenda and presented by Mr. Gleason.
Is there a second? Second, motion made by Selkman Newhouse, excuse me, second by Selkman Semaglia. All those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We, I don't think I see anybody here. Oh, wait. Shall we start?
Joe Martinello is here on behalf of Joe Marie.
Okay. Good evening. Why don't you just come right up? All right, evidently you're filling in for-
I'm confused right now.
Yeah, I was just, you're filling in for Joe Marie?
Yes.
If you wanted to state your name for the record. It's Woman of Wilmington. I understand you're not a woman, obviously, you're filling in. It's program update and request to conduct the 2014 Run for Wilmington Walk for Kim Forte. And just, I know who you are, just state your name for the record.
So I'm Joe Martinello, 17 Crescent Street, and I am now the Vice President of the Women of Wilmington, and will be looking into a name change to accommodate that moving forward.
Hey, it's 2013, so, you know.
And I'm here today to request a permit for the road race, April 27th, the Kim Forte Walk and Road Race from Wilmington, and also provide a quick update. So I can give you a quick update on some of the activities that the organization's been up to throughout the year.
Sure, fantastic.
And our most recent activity was the Festival of Trees, just held this past weekend. We've raised over, or two weekends past, raised over $9,000 in 2012, and this year we've gone up to $11,500 through the festival. They had close to 90 trees this year, wreaths and baskets at the event itself. Some entertainment, we had strings attached, the clarinet trio from the high school, Mrs. Claus was there, the Wild Children's Choir was there as well. The fundraising support that we got from the community, from the businesses, the media outlets, in addition to that, other local organizations and the residents of this town has been tremendous, and it continues to allow this organization to thrive. And with some of those funds, we were able to adopt seven families this holiday season for gifts for their holidays, offer up some gift cards to three other families as well in need. We were able to line up five children for the Sponsor a Child program as well. So that's just the most recent activity from the WOW organization. Last year at the road race, we had over 400 runners/walkers participating in that 5K event. From that event, something that was new last year, 38 nonprofits benefited from that event. Some of the registration funds, they got to donate them back to another local nonprofit organization in the town of Wilmington. So $2,100 went back into nonprofits in this town, which is a great way of organizing the event last year. Other things throughout the year, there were 19 enrichment activities done to entertain 40 to 80, 40 to 68 members. There were donated, we've donated baskets to other nonprofit organizations for their fundraising activities throughout the year, as well as families in need. In addition to that, for families in need, the organization's been able to help out with utility bills, collect Halloween costumes for families that can't afford them, and distribute them out to the community. Over 96 members within the WOW organization volunteered at the food pantry this past year, which is an outstanding number when you look at the 400 membership. It's a great percentage of the organization giving back into the community. We've donated over 75 pies during the Thanksgiving time period for holidays for families as well. From an education perspective, giving back into the community, purchased books for the children's literacy closet for the kindergarten classrooms. In addition to that, 52 backpacks were pulled together this year at the beginning of the school year for families in need and given to students. There were eight packages pulled together for the school nurses as well, and we've donated to the WEF through sponsorships of teams at their annual spelling bee competition. And then finally, three scholarships given to high school students that have demonstrated a commitment to community service, totaling over $6,000. So this organization continues to do a lot throughout this community, and we look at our key fundraisers at the Festival of Trees, as well as the Walk, to help support those activities back into the community.
Very good. I say wow, you know, Woman of Wilmington, I should say wow, outstanding what they do. Joe Marie's been fantastic, and all the women on that community does, and I know Mr. Newhouse's wife started to do a fantastic job in the community. And any comments from the board? I'll sit down here.
No, I just want to say, it's just another example of the town of Wilmington that always steps up for all different organizations. I mean, the Wilmington Community Fund has been around since 1945. I know we met last Friday, was it Friday morning? Yeah. Friday morning, and discussed some of the nonprofits in town, and it's just amazing that no matter what endeavors somebody takes on, it's amazing how this town steps up, volunteers their time and money, and, you know, organization's had it around since 1945, and the 4th of July Committee's been around for 33 years, and go on naming all kinds of nonprofits. So it's awesome. It's just another example of Wilmington stepping up.
Yeah, very good. Anybody else?
I think it's all been said. Thank you very much for being here, great update, and thank you for all that you do for the community, and glad to see that you're involved now, and I look forward to the new name, and I'm sure you're a welcome addition with all of the previous work that you've done on other things. It's been a great ride for you with those endeavors, and I'm sure you'll add to this as well. So thank you.
Just thinking pow, people of Wilmington. Just throw that on the table. Yeah, indeed. Thank you very much, Joe. How long has this race, or this, it's a road race, it's a walk and a run, is that right? Yes, it is. How long is it?
It'll be to the third annual.
This'll be the third?
Yeah.
So again, it came onto the radar screen only a short three years ago and has exploded as was, was this just the second Festival of Trees?
The third annual.
This is the third.
Yeah.
I wanted to compliment the entire Woman of Wilmington team that worked on that. I had the good fortune of being able to go to that last weekend during the tree lighting, and that's what I think is, it's really, it's become, and the tree lighting has always been such a fun sort of community-based activity all by itself, and now with it happening in conjunction with the Festival of Trees, I hope that that tradition stays because it really creates a very nice evening when the trees are lit. Now it's like, where do we go from here? And you move right across the street and enjoy the festival. So hopefully that becomes a mutually beneficial kind of scenario and continues to support that endeavor and that fundraising event. So thank you very much for taking the challenge on as Vice President?
Yeah.
In your spare time?
In my spare time.
That's great. And continued success to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We appreciate everything that you, Jeff, you wanted to say something?
I was just going to say, is the board, does the board wish to consider the date of April 27th for the Run/Walk?
Does that work for you from the town calendar perspective? Is there any issues with that?
That is the, that's a Sunday, day after local elections. There's nothing scheduled at this point.
So is there a motion on the table to approve the data as described by the town manager?
So moved.
Motion made by Selkman Newhouse, second by Selkman O'Connell. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You turn on. Merry Christmas. Go right into this, right, 7:20?
Yes.
All right, it's not a public hearing. I'm going to go right into that 7:20 appointment because we're going to be signing a lot of common victual licenses and to the manager's office as we did last year. We're going to be in there probably a good hour or plus just signing those off. So Mohammed Rahimi, The Sandwich Exchange, request to obtain a common victual license for property located at 16 Upton Drive, Unit 5. Is the individual in the audience? I know I said the word Mohammed. I apologize if I didn't pronounce the last name. How do you say it?
Wow.
How do you say your last name?
Rahimi.
Okay, I was close. Why don't you take a seat here, sir, right over here. Thank you. It's just a public meeting. You want to tell the board exactly what you're looking to do, then I'll go to the town manager, and then we'll go to the membership. Thank you.
Sandwich Exchange, I believe, has been there for 17 years, and I'm just buying the business, and I plan to operate it the way it is, make some changes, try to improve on it. I'd like to put, at some point, I'd like to add full breakfast menu to the place, and I think there is improvement, and there is room for improvement. I've been in food business for over 30 years. I also graduated from Bentley College, so I have some experience. I've been, I have had three other restaurants prior to this, not in this area. I had a couple restaurants in PVD, and I had a restaurant in Metford, Mass. So that's very much what I'm planning to do.
Very good. You gave us a great background. Jeff, any input from the department heads related to this?
The, there's no issues from the department heads in terms of the application for common victual. Or one question, though, we also have an application for common victual from the current owner, Mr. Malordi. Is he here?
Yes. Well, that was due in November, and I wanted to make sure that got in on time, and then in the interim, was able to come across Mr. Rahimi, and we were able to cut a deal on selling the restaurant. So I'm not necessarily going to need it. He's going to need it in his name, so I just didn't know how that works. I just wanted to make sure it got in on time.
Okay, so your intention is to withdraw your application for the common victuals?
Yes.
That is the only question.
All right, so if that's noted, it's a public meeting, so if that's noted, then we'll put that as part of the agenda. Shouldn't be a problem.
In terms of recommendations, Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, indicates I recommend approval of common victualers for the Sandwich Exchange Beef and Pizza located at 16 Upton Drive.
I'll just go to the membership with these, you all set, Jeff?
Building Inspector, this is in allowed use in the highway industrial zone. There are no zoning issues. That's it.
I'm very good. If there's any questions, comments, motions from the membership?
I'll make the motion that we grant the victuals license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Selkman Semaglia, second by Selkman Shampoo. All those in favor? It's unanimous, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
You all have a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
You too.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we'll just go right into Communications. Jeff?
The first communication we have is from the, from Mass Housing. This is with regard to a draft summary for Metro at Wilmington Station, which is the rental development. If you recall, this is a former Diamond Crystal property. It has since been developed into a 108-unit rental area, and the report from Mass Housing reviewed a certified public accounting report on the developer EA Fish with respect to their schedule of fees and overhead in their limited dividend payout. Essentially, this is a requirement of the state per the 40B requirements. Mass Housing is indicating here in their report that the developer has stayed within the limits prescribed by the regulations regarding this development. Specifically, Mass Housing believes that the developer has not exceeded the Chapter 40B maximum fee and overhead allowed to be earned on the development by the developer as a limited dividend entity. Mass Housing has determined that the maximum allowable developer fee and overhead is $1,917,093, which equals the reported amount in the cost examination as further described in the document. Mass Housing has determined that the allowable annual limited dividend distribution is $571,713, which equals the reported amount in the cost examination as further described in the report. And the report offers the town an opportunity to comment or express any questions. Carol Hamilton, the Director of Planning and Conservation, has reviewed the report and concurs with the findings. We have a document from Richard Verveil, Chief Hazard Mitigation Assistant from FEMA. This is a invitation to a representative from the town to attend a meeting on January 7th with regard to receiving a preliminary update on the flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study for the Shawshine River area. The meeting will describe the review process that took place, that was used to update the data, identify changes to the maps, and answer any questions. So a representative from the Engineering Department will be attending this meeting We have correspondence from the Mass State Lottery. Specifically, the Mass State Lottery is offering existing non-pouring agents our Keno To-Go Game, transaction which is identical to the already existing online games such as Mega Bucks and Mass Cash. At this time, the lottery is not providing agents with a Keno monitor as part of its program. In accordance with MGL Chapter 10, Section 27A as amended, you are hereby notified that the following existing agent in your community will be sent an application and agreement to sell Keno To-Go product. Main Street Liquors, 335 Main Street, Unit 1, in Wilmington. If you object to these, this agent selling Keno To-Go, you must do so in writing within 21 days of receipt of the letter. So essentially, the board, there's no action required of the board unless the board objects to the issuance. This notice has been reviewed by the police chief, and he indicates upon completing an investigation, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the Keno To-Go request presented by Main Street Liquors, also known as Tucker's Liquor LLC.
I don't see if there's any objections, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. Very good.
And then a memo to the board. This is with regard to the July 4th fireworks and festivities. As you know, it was announced last week that the July 4th Committee has voted not to hold the Fun on the Fourth event in 2014. The memo to the board is intended to reflect what took place in the lead-up to this. It was an extensive review and consideration given to the use of the current high school campus and other town and non-town-owned locations to launch the fireworks. And there were a number of conversations, communications with the Chair of the July 4th Committee, Mr. Grant. We had at least two or three meetings here in this room discussing various options. In the end, it's been my conclusion that launching the fireworks from the high school campus in 2014 presents a significant risk to potential damage to the artificial turf field, the recently resurfaced track, and potentially the high school roof. So that location, in my estimation, for 2014 is not a viable location. We looked at three different areas within the high school campus, the baseball field, the football field, and then the area which is over off of Wildwood Street, which currently serves as the staging area for the construction group that's there. And given the distances from the track and the football field and the roof of the new high school, it's, in my estimation, it presents a risk of potential damage. We also looked at other locations. We looked at the Glen Road Fields, Town Park, former Yentile property, Silver Lake, middle school property. They all lacked one issue or another in terms of requirements, whether it was parking, appropriate viewing space. In the end, were not conducive to that kind of setup. We also considered the Aleppo Shriners property. Did not have any specific conversations with them, but that property did seem to present some opportunity as a possible spot, given the potential location for the fireworks, parking, and opportunity perhaps to have some kind of a event there similar to what has taken place on the common. In the end, it's my understanding the July 4th Committee did not wish to pursue that option, so for now, that's where we are. Clearly, this is an event that has come to, I think, symbolize what Wilmington is about in so many ways, in terms of the spirit of the community, the hospitality of the community. So it's certainly my goal to see that the event in some form or fashion can continue. If not in 2014, then perhaps look at 2015. You know, I think we need to look at the options again, whether it be on the existing campus or elsewhere, but given the fact that, you know, the town has invested so much in the high school and is investing so much in the high school, I'm just, and the fact that we have had in prior years where the fireworks were launched from the football field, instances where material has come down onto the football field, onto the track, and at least one instance where material came down onto the current high school roof and created some amount of damage. It's my estimation that that location should not be used for this year.
I know that, to the credit of the town manager, he did give me a call and give me an update, and he looked at every possibility of trying to do something, and I know Scott probably been commenting at the moment, and hopefully they look at something in the future, but I'd have to agree with the town manager. We have a major investment in our new high school, our new field, football field, and I do support the town's manager's decision. And I know, as Lou said earlier, volunteerism in the town of Wilmington, there's no other community that does what the town of Wilmington does. And I know some people are going to be very upset by it, not only in Wilmington, but other communities as well. I own a business in town, I here all the time. Wilmington does a great job. People live in Boricca, Burlington, Bedford, Tewksbury, Redding, and everybody around that area comes to Wilmington. So any other comments from the board at all?
Yeah, well, I would like the opportunity to just, I don't have anything formally put together. I too support your decision on this, Jeff. Obviously, the town is in a position where we're making a massive investment in the school, and we certainly don't want to forego or put at risk that incredible project. On the other hand, it's a bit of a dilemma because, like you said, that 4th of July celebration, that generations have come to really enjoy and count on, has been, and I'll use your word, has become part of the fabric of who we are in this community. And last year, we experienced a pause or a change in the way that that was, in the way that the 4th of July was celebrated in town, and I think we all kind of lamented it. It was, it just wasn't the same. Inasmuch as, to their credit, the 4th of July Committee tried to keep it together and tried to give us some portion of the 4th of July celebration, it just wasn't the same. So, you know, again, I think, I'm open to the, and receptive to the idea of a pause in our traditional 4th of July celebration while we go through the construction process, but I'm deeply committed to working with you and the 4th of July Committee or anybody else in whatever capacity I can to see, and hopefully to see us come back to that type of a 4th of July celebration that involves perhaps a carnival, involves fireworks, and involves the things that brings the community out and together and continues that sort of fabric of Wilmington, what we won awards for. You know, we've won grants from Liberty Mutual on our 4th of July celebration. When I say "we," the town and the 4th of July Committee. And was it the Business Week article that granted us best small community to live in, et cetera? You know, I hope we can, I really do hope that we can get back to it in 2015. I hope that perhaps the Yentile property could be one of the sites for either or, or maybe both of those, either fireworks or carnival. I wonder if, you know, I know that you talked about in your memo about a covering that could be put over a portion of the football field to bring us into the buffer zone. Yes, it's expensive, but is it an investment that the town and/or the 4th of July Committee could raise funds and offset so that we could get back to what we used to have? I hope that we can flush out every possibility and find one that's agreeable to everyone. So I'm hoping, again, I hope we can get there for 2015, and I'm sorry that 2014 will pass us by.
Thank you, Mr. Shampoo. Any other comments from the board at all?
I would just offer some comments that are similar, I guess, in that, you know, from my perspective, this certainly does seem like an extensive review, as I think the manager used that description. And it seems to me that it in fact was a thorough review and an extensive review, and I don't take any issue whatsoever with the decision. I think it's a decision that needs to be made. Going forward, I would hope that perhaps we can have a review that we would consider exhaustive, where we turn over every rock and figure out what's in the best interest of the town going forward in 2015. I think that requires the manager to have some time to understand the economics of the festivities as they've existed for the past several years. I think we have to have a clear understanding of what effect, if any, any of the resource areas in the area of the high school site, how they play into it. And I think that we need to look at alternative sites, and I would- And I think that we need to look at alternative sites, and I wouldn't presume to limit those alternatives, but specifically, you know, the Shriners property, to me, looks like something that we ought to look at very seriously and see what interest there is from that organization and how compatible it is to certain components, if not all, the components of the 4th of July festivities. So I just feel as though, you know, the, we all may get accustomed to a specific program, but I just think that this town will celebrate the 4th of July, and, you know, this is a town that I've said many times, and many people say it, wears its patriotism on its sleeve. And I just believe that, in one form or another, that this town will see fit to celebrate Independence Day. And, you know, how we do that going forward, I trust the manager is going to give us as many options as possible. And I would think, you know, in the spring or the summer might be the optimal time to try and get that exhaustive information back. Once we get through the budget season and town meeting season, I think that we could look forward to the spring or summer to have that kind of information. And certainly, those festivities, I think, will be missed in 2014, but it may not be the worst thing to have plenty of time to look at all of our alternatives and come up with something that we think is in the best interest of the town.
I agree, Mr. Newhouse.
Yeah, I just want to start by saying that I am on the 4th of July committee, have been for a few years now. And at the meeting, we took the vote not to cancel the whole 4th of July, it's still going to come around, July 4th. But the festivities, that I've been fortunate enough and honored to be on the committee to help plan, the vote was taken with a lot of conversation, a lot of meetings, and a lot of seriously looking, soul-searching, like, what are we going to do? This is a, this is a very, like Mike said, a passionate town. We are very passionate about our patriotism in this town and that committee. And so it's not something that we just said, let's just cancel it because we can't do it at the new high school site. I do understand, I do agree with Jeff's decision about the new roof, or the new high school and the new roof on it, and the new turf field and the track. There may be some options that we, and we have looked at a lot of options where they can be covered, sprayed down by the fire department during and before the shows. I know Winchester does it right now. I believe they fire them right from their field. I'm not right on the field, I'm sure, but the staging, I believe, is set up right on the field at Winchester, and they also have a new turf field. Again, a lot of work goes into this planning year-round. We take August off as a committee, and then we meet every month leading up to it. So it's not a decision that was made lightly. And last year, what happened with the carnival, obviously, the carnival generates a lot of money towards the fireworks. Mr. Grant is here, might want to speak a little more on that, but I know the money itself is around $30,000 a year for fireworks, something to that effect, 25. I was trying to embellish to get a little more money for the committee. You know, and the nonprofits, all of them were down last year. The crowd was down, I believe, on the Friday night. We counted 150 people on the Common, where, given the band and the weather and all that, you know, it could have been thousands, and there has been thousands in the past. So I understand what's going on. We kind of had an idea something was going to happen when we voted on a new high school for the town. Obviously, that location was not going to be used at least for a year or two during the construction anyway. We understood that. We were able to pull off the fireworks last year financially through the committee and pay for it. But again, the money's just not there without the carnival. But there's so many different reasons that go into it. I think my main point is, I just wanted to get the point across that we, as a committee, put a lot of thought into this, and we just didn't vote to cancel the 4th of July easily. And I do agree with Mike, the town of Wilmington does wear its patriotism on its sleeve and go all over that. But I'm proud of what we've accomplished in the years that I've been on the committee and the 33 years that the committee has been working hard to put the celebration together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see Scott Grant in the audience, the chairman of the 4th of July committee. Scott, you want to say anything?
Certainly.
You're welcome to come up here.
Thank you. I didn't comment any of the speak, just kind of make myself available for any questions. But just to reflect on what Lou and, to some extent, Jeff said, we spent a great deal of time as a committee, a great deal of time at Town Hall with Jeff and members of the Police Department, Fire Department, BBW, Public Buildings, Town Engineer, and we also made a site visit right after that meeting, which was in early November. Fire Department was pretty confident there were measures they could take to allow us to shoot out there. I understand ultimately there's a risk involved, and that's not my decision. As a committee, we contemplated having an event at the Common without a carnival, without fireworks, and as was alluded to by both Selectman Shampoo and Selectman Semaglia, without those, it's not, in our mind, at present, a sustainable event. Last year, without a carnival, we didn't have people come down. On the nights we had fireworks, yes, we had people come down, but those were the only nights. So now we don't have a carnival, we don't have fireworks, it's not sustainable as we've traditionally known it. We had a lengthy discussion about going to the Shriners. The Shriners is not the Town Common. It doesn't have the same feel, it doesn't have the same sense of community in our minds that the Town Common offers, and it also has logistical issues. Parking, could we have a carnival up there? Could we have fireworks up there? Could we have both? If we do, where are people going to sit? They're going to sit in a dirt parking lot, or they're going to sit down on the street where the cars would be parked to watch fireworks? All of that presumes that the Shriners would, A, be available, have the facility available, and would entertain the possibility, and not have the same concerns, frankly, that the town manager has about their building. So all that being considered, over many hours of conversations from August through last week, last Tuesday night, we determined that it was best to not have our events in 2014. And as a committee, this is near and dear to us, and we stand ready to plow forward and present the events as we've come to know them, as close as possible to that in the years to come.
Very good, well put. In the short term, it's not going to happen, but who knows what's going to happen over, maybe a little bit of a short or long term. You know, 2015 was alluded to, so I appreciate everything that you said and everything you did, and I'm sure, you know, we feel the same way you do. And we love, you know, Wilmington's our home. We live here, we love living here, we own businesses, we get up every morning, our children go to school, and it's a great community. And like you said, as Lou stated earlier, volunteerism and Mr. Newhouse, we wear our patriotism on our sleeve, and it's a great community. So we'll be optimistic. Maybe in 2015, there could be something happening, who knows? Only time will tell, and I'm sure.
Chairman, also, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. Just to let you know, the 4th of July committee also runs the tree lighting every year. That's part of our committee and what we have done. And we got rid of the 4th of July, now we're going to get rid of the tree lighting next year, too. I'm kidding, Jeff.
I may be nervous there.
Jeez.
How bug.
Christmas, yeah, there's no Christmas.
There's no Christmas.
The one thing we do is, there's no charge for the entertainment, okay? But anyway, all right? So, no, so once again, we really appreciate all your effort, and hopefully, down the road, something will be promised. Mr. Shampoo?
Quick question. All I know is what I read in the local paper last week, that the 4th of July has been canceled. But what I, I know that we, obviously, we're not having fireworks, we're not having evening events, there's no concerts, but there's, you know, that day, I forget, I think it's just Family Fun Day, where the little kids come down with their decorated bikes, and there's races and competitions, and, you know, the Common gets busy, in spite of the fact that usually, the carnival isn't open yet, and that evening, maybe there's Family Day fireworks, but during the day, it's a busy day full of activities and fun. Is there no potential for that Family Fun Day anyway? Because I'm concerned a little bit about, I think it was Mr. Semaglia said, the 4th of July will come, and Wilmington will find a way to celebrate it. How? In the absence of some sort of an event being planned, are people just going to sort of come and, is there anything happening at all?
Well, no.
Okay.
Not in 2014. And we did contemplate having a Family Day, our traditional Family Day, obviously, without fireworks, without carnival. And while the morning portion was pretty well-attended last year, the numbers were still down.
Yeah.
And to me, to the committee, a large part of what we do is involving and supporting the community groups, and to ask them to come down for a day and do what they traditionally do with their booths and so forth, we didn't see as being realistic. And frankly, based upon the levels of support we saw last year without the draw of a carnival, we just determined that it wasn't sustainable.
You know, if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, again, I don't want to, to my way of thinking, we have an opportunity here for the manager, working in cooperation with the 4th of July committee and others, to bring something back to the board to consider as a game plan for 2015 and beyond. So I don't want to try and, you know, predict what all those alternatives might be, but the one thing that, to me, the, you know, Wilmington celebrated the 4th of July and had fireworks going back many, many years, and I'd be willing to bet you, even though I was really too young to speak to it in terms of my own memory, you know, I think that what, how it started was not necessarily how it looked in 2010, 11, 12. So, you know, my point is, we're getting a chance now to take another look at what the town can offer to its residents to celebrate the 4th of July. And hopefully, that involves fireworks. I very much hope that it does. But in any case, let's figure out what those options are. I mean, you know, and to understand what those options are, we not only have to explore every possible site, we have to understand what it takes to subsidize the fireworks. I mean, if we can find a location that is suitable for that activity, you know, I hear the chairman, and I've heard him before, that, you know, the only way to sustain that level is through the carnival. Or maybe that's not stating exactly right. Certainly, the carnival has what has supported the fireworks in the past, and that's what's generated the revenue sufficient to put on those festivities. I think we need to look at that. We need to figure out whether or not there's another way to fund, you know, fireworks and other, you know, festivities, whether it's public money, whether it's, you know, taxpayer money to an extent, whether it's private business that might be willing to step up, whether it's the 4th of July committee working with other organizations to raise the money. I mean, I'm just, you know, I think that what I don't want to do is get pigeonholed in this idea that it's, that, you know, it's either going to be exactly the way it was in 2012 or nothing. And I'm, and I'm not hearing Mr. Grant, or Mr. Semaglia, or anybody else saying that it would be, but I'm kind of pointing out that we keep thinking about how it was in 2012. And, you know, and then the many changes that happened in 2013. Let's see what we can do, and let's figure out how that is sustainable over the long haul, you know, and let's regroup. And again, leave it to the manager to establish a timeline that makes sense, but to me, if you're looking at 2015, to try and have a, you know, a game plan and a goal to strive for the spring or the summer, early part of this summer, should be the time we make those decisions.
I totally agree with Mr. Newhouse, and I agree with you, Scott. You know, you need a little time. So Jeff, you're going to be Bill Belichick, not next season, but the season after, depending on you, with the 4th of July committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I agree with everything you just said, Mike. I agree totally, and that's what we do. We raise funds in this town, get things done. The only thing that I don't see, or I, not that I disagree with, that I don't see happening is if we don't have something for the residents or for whoever's coming down to the Common, whether it be at the carnival, the bands, the fireworks, we just don't get the crowds. And that showed us last year especially, kind of pointed it out. And just hearing from people in town, it's, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think our Family Day is one of our high points, where you have all the tug-of-war and the water toss, water balloon toss, all those things are great, but I just don't think, times have changed.
We need all the components.
Yeah, we need something to get people there. And yeah, the night of the fireworks, maybe that's what it'll be. It'll be one night of fireworks, and, you know, we'll get some money, whether it's corporate tax or fundraising, it can be done, but maybe that's just what it'll end up being, you know, scaled down. But we have a year-plus to look at that.
That makes sense.
My thinking, as Selectman Newhouse was speaking, is very much in line with that. The first question that has to be answered is, can we shoot fireworks? Because if we cannot, people are going to go to other communities to watch them, which means whatever else we're doing down there will not be attended. In the evening.
Totally makes sense. All right, very good. We appreciate you being here and answering those questions, and hopefully, the residents understand that, and I think they do. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, moving right along.
Okay, under Board to Consider, you have a memo from Town Clerk Sharon George, reads as follows. At this time, I am requesting the Board to select and approve a fee increase of $2 per copy associated with vital records, which would increase our fee to $10 per copy. Attached, please find a survey compiled by my office of surrounding towns. As you can see, Wilmington's charge of $8 per copy, in the most recent surrounding town charges, at least 10. The clerk's office has not requested a fee increase for vital records in over 10 years. The way vital records are now being printed and certified has changed drastically over the last few years. Today, all records must be copied to security watermark paper, contractual changes in employee salaries, and each certified copy now must be, have a gold seal embraced on the town seal. Therefore, I'm recommending this fee increase to cover additional costs. So as Sharon indicated, there were, we are the only town in our area that is lower is Woburn at $5, Burlington's 15, Andover's 10, Boricca's 10, North Redding's 10, Redding's 10, Tewksbury's 15, Winchester's 20. It seems to me to make sense to increase this fee by the $2. Based upon the most recent years, the number of requests for vital records has ranged from 3241 in 2010 down to 2254 in 2012. So it appears to be averaging around 2,500 over the last several years. So the $2 increase would essentially generate about $5,000 in additional local receipts.
Totally understandable. Is there a motion from the Board to support the town clerk's request?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Semaglia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman O'Connell. All those in favor, and it's unanimous. Thank you. All right.
This Board is being asked to endorse the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Just by way of information, Carol Hamilton, the Director of Planning and Conservation, has headed up this effort over the last several months, and she indicates, attached is a letter of support for the recently updated Wilmington Open Space and Recreation Plan that will be submitted to the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The Conservation Commission has been working with a consultant, Sue Brown, to revise the plan to fulfill requirements for submission. The Open Space Committee, of which Mr. Shampoo is the Selectman's representative, has met to comment on the plan and work through the proposed goals in an action plan. Residents were surveyed, Boards, Commissions, and Town Department Heads have had an opportunity to comment, as well as residents, and the plan is in the final stages of preparation for being submitted to the state. A revised plan allows the town to apply for funding for open space and recreation projects, which may be an opportunity for the development of the Yentile site. As long as the state has a draft plan, the town is eligible to apply for grants. It's my hope that the Board will sign the letter of support for the plan. The letter and all comments received will accompany the submission of the plan. Your support is appreciated.
Given the town manager's request, is there a motion to our support with the town manager is seeking?
Move the Board to endorse the Open Space and Recreation Plan and request the chairman to sign the letter as presented.
Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Shampoo. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, very good.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, we have Board to Consider, alcohol licenses, Class 1 garage... At this point, Mr. Chairman, we have Board to Consider alcohol licenses, Class 1 Garage, Class 2 Garage, Entertainment and Common Victular licenses. What I propose is that I'll go through each category of licenses, and ask the Board to consider either voting in total, or if there are particular, particular applications or requests for licenses you wish to deal with separately, we can do that also.
If you want, if there's no objection, we can take a blanket vote. For example, common victual license, or liquor license, or Class 1 license, and if there's any abstentions or any comments, feel free to jump right in. And then we're going to be, obviously, signing it in the Town Manager's office at the conclusion of the meeting. We're going to be in there for a good amount of time, so if you want to do that, Jeff.
Sure. Why don't I start by just indicating the licenses before the Board. This is with respect to the alcohol licenses. Lepo Temple, Fordham Road Associates, Inc., for a club license. Knights of Columbus, 4982 Building Associates, Inc. This is for a club license. Average LLC Doing Businesses Colonial Park Liquors Package Store License. Eastgate Liquors, 211 Lowell Street Corp., Package Store License. Mystic Liquors, Inc. Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits Package Store License. Shoprite Liquors, Inc., Package Store License. Tucker's Liquor Doing Businesses Main Street Liquors Package Store License. Michael's Place, Inc., Alcohol Restaurant License. Pacific Sunshine, Inc., Doing Businesses Pacific Grove, All Alcohol Restaurant License. Rocco's Restaurant, Inc., Alcohol License. 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC Doing Businesses 99 Restaurant and Pub, Alcohol Restaurant License. A&amp;C Stone, Inc., Doing Businesses Golden Ginger Restaurant, Alcohol Restaurant License. Pepper Dining, Inc., Doing Businesses Chili's Grill and Bar, All Alcohol License. And we have actually the GB, BGP Tavern, although they're, at this point, not seeking a license, they're still under construction.
All right, the Manager read all the alcohol license renewals. Is there a motion to approve?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just by way of information, these have been reviewed by the Police Chief. He indicates Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the applications for renewal of the respective alcohol license listed below. Each year, the Department also conducts random compliance checks and notifies the Board of Selectmen, as well as the licensee of any non-compliance issues. As of the last compliance check of each respective license, all applicants for renewal are currently in compliance. Therefore, the Department recommends renewal of the following licenses, and that list is reflective of the list I just read.
Okay, great, thank you. If there's no objections, I'll call for the vote. I'll support all the liquor license, but I will abstain from my own Michael's Place, so just to make that part of the record. Is there a motion to approve the all-alcohol beverage license?
So moved.
Second, before you entertain a vote.
Correct.
Ben, were you trying to convey a clerical point that I didn't want to miss?
On the alcohol, Red Heat Tavern is looking for renewal.
Okay, yeah, common victuals, okay.
Okay. All right, motion made by Selectman Semaglia, seconded by Selectman Newhouse, are those in favor? The vote's unanimous, and the vote will be four to one on Michael's Place, and I will abstain from that, okay? All right, thank you.
Next, we have Class 1 and 2 Garage License Renewals. Listed under Class 1, we have Bill Doobie Hyundai Doing Businesses, Bill Doobie Auto Group, Inc., 271 Main Street, and also Cornerstone Automotives, Semino Automotives, Inc., 580 Main Street. We have under Class 2 Garage Licenses, Advanced Automotive Wilmington Shell, Inc., Doing Business as 779 Woburn Street, Charlie's Auto Sales LLC, 611 Main Street, Heavy Equipment Connections, Inc., 239 Andover Street, Imperial Auto LLC, 845 Woburn Street, J&amp;E Services Corp., 619 Rear Main Street, Naya Inc., DBA Z&amp;S Gas and Service, 603 Main Street, Route 16 Auto Broker, Adamo Ruffo and Michael Sciarra, DBA 600 Main Street.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Recommendation from the Police Chief, upon review, the Police Department recommends renewal of the following Class 1 and 2 Garage License Renewal Applications for 2014, and their list is, again, reflective of those that I just referenced.
So it's acceptable by the Police Department. Why don't we take up the Class 1 Garage License first, and we'll take up Class 2 second? Is there a motion to approve the Class 1 Garage License?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Shampoo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman O'Connell, are those in favor? And it's unanimous, thank you. All right, why don't we take up the Class 2? Is there a motion to accept Class 2 Garage License? Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, seconded by Selectman Shampoo, Selectman Semaglia, I apologize, are those in favor? And it's unanimous, thank you. All right, very good. Entertainment.
Okay, we're, actually, next, we have common victular licenses. This, the listing of licenses here for renewal. 99 Restaurant Pub, 99 Boston, Inc., DBA, AJ's Kitchen, Lepo Temple, As Good As It Gets Cafe, Brothers Roast Beef and Pizza, Burger King Restaurant, Carmella Stop and Go LLC, Chili's Grill and Bar, Pepper Dining, Inc., China Walk, Country Chef Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, Inc., Adams Donut, DBA 211 Lowell Street, Dunkin' Donuts C&amp;C Donut, Inc., DBA 195 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts DJQ Donut LLC, 66XS Concord Street, Dunkin' Donuts Hannan Donuts LLC, DBA 359 Middlesex Avenue, Dunkin' Donuts Wilmington Donuts, Inc., DBA 321 Main Street, Golden Ginger Restaurant, A&amp;C Stone, Inc., DBA, Heavenly Donuts, 579 Main Street Donut Shop, Inc., DBA, Honeydew Donut, Izzy Coffee Shop LLC, DBA 337 Main Street, Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, Jasmine Cuisine, Inc., DBA, Knights of Columbus, 4982 Building Associates, McDonald's Restaurant, Michael's Place, Inc., Pacific Grove, Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA, Panera Bread, Peter's Pizza and Roast Beef, Pink Melon Frozen Yogurts, Kwong Bow, DBA, Rizzo Roast Beef and Pizza, Inc., Rocco's Restaurant, Inc. As noted, the Sandwich Exchange, the prior owner has withdrawn their application, Smard's Super Beef, Sonic Drive-In, Starbucks Coffee, Subway Royal S Corp., DBA, Subway Kamars Store, Inc., DBA, Sunnyside Cafe, Sunshine Kitchen, Diane T. Cuts, DBA, The Corner Store, and Wilmington House of Pizza.
All approvals on Board of Health and Mission, also.
Recommendations from the Building Inspector is to recommend each of these that was referenced Also, from the Health Director, each of those that was referenced here recommended for And that's it.
All right, once again, if there's no objection, I'll call for the vote. I'll support all the common victual license, I'll abstain from my own. Is there a motion to accept the, approve the common victual license as read by the Town Manager?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Shampoo, are those in favor? The vote's unanimous, and relative to Michael's Place, the vote is four to one, and I will abstain from that. Thank you. All right, good.
And we have entertainment licenses. There are two licenses. One is Pacific Sunshine, Inc., DBA Pacific Grove, 211 E Lowell Street, Rocco's Restaurant, 193 Main Street. Recommendation from the Police Chief, upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2014 Entertainment License Application Renewal Request submitted by the following Pacific Sunshine, Inc., Rocco's Restaurant, Inc. That's it.
All right, no objection from the Police Department? All right, I'll entertain, is there a motion to approve the entertainment license as read by the Town Manager?
So moved.
Motion by Selectman Semaglia, is there a second? Sorry, Lou, I didn't say it twice. Seconded by Selectman Newhouse, are those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And just by way of information, you may recall last year that we had a, for the last several years, automatic amusement license. The Santa Maria Pizza on 362 Middlesex Ave did not request renewal in 2014.
All right, very good. All right, we'll go right to our public comments. Any comments from the audience? Yes, yes, Mr. Linkerfelt, go ahead.
Make a comment if I could, maybe you told me that I can't. I'd like to reprise the Board of a recent displeasure with the Building Inspector, if I could, or?
Can I tell you something? No, that's, we're not going to take that up right here. If there's an issue with the Building Inspector, or any Department Head, the proper process is to contact the Town Manager. He is their boss, and under the Town Charter, he's their boss, simply put.
That's why I asked.
Okay.
I'll follow up with the Manager again, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, given there's no other public comments, how about our new business and committee reports, and I'll start on this side, Mr. Shampoo?
Nothing substantial, other than you, we collectively put forth the Open Space and Recreation Plan tonight. I had attended one of the meetings of that committee as your liaison there, and what we've done is a good thing. We've ultimately put in place motion, put in motion, the opportunity for the town now to apply for and ultimately be considered for any types of grants that may be available from the state or federal. So that's a good thing. You know, the plan being in place doesn't mean we have to do the things that are in the plan. It means that we have a guide, a guidepost for any kind of activities, or open space type of projects that may come before us in the future. And moreover, it gives us the opportunity to apply for grants. So thank you for the quick approval on that. Other than that, no, I just simply would say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shampoo.
The only update I would have is that the Antile Committee will be meeting in the month of January. The date is to be determined, and the Town Manager is in the process of solidifying the contract with our design firm, and there will be some public information that will be available in the month of January. So that will just add to what's already been stated with the Open Space Plan, and really excited to get this committee off the ground in 2014, and we'll have some exciting updates certainly soon and prior to town meeting.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Judy. Any other?
Just Merry Christmas to everyone here, and to folks at home.
I have a couple things after, actually, Mr. Chairman. The light at 62 and Main Street is, I've gotten a few phone calls actually on that one about the light cycling again. I remember when Mr. LaPaul was on this board, and we had brought it up, and I'm sure we've brought it up since then, but I've gotten a bunch of calls about coming from the Burlington Way, that guess a couple of cycles actually skip before that even turns green, and coming up the other way. So if we could just have, I believe that's a state light, and if we could have somebody look into that. And the recent snowstorm and plowing reminds us all again of the mailboxes that are taken out. My neighbors, who said I noticed that. But is there something maybe you can explain to the residents how they go about getting their mailboxes repaired?
Yes, if there's a mailbox that's been struck by a plow, the residents should contact the Public Works Department. The number there is 978-658-4711, and provide the address and name of the homeowners. There is a specific amount, a particular type of box that the town will pay for in terms of replacement, and the arrangements can be made with the Public Works.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Chairman, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Mr. Semaglia's comment about the intersection might be helpful. I'm not, this is actually constructive.
Go right ahead, sure. I'll let you know in about five seconds.
Yeah, no, this really is, this really is. I actually cross that intersection a lot, and I've noticed personally, coming up from the post office, I was using my route to go through there, waiting for that very brief light to go right. I've seen a lot of people taking a left from the opposite side to go towards your, that way. I don't know if they're allowed to do that, but I've seen a lot of real near-miss accidents up there. I just wanted to add that, if someone's going to look at that intersection, just to add that to the mix, that I've seen a lot of cars taking real questionable left turns.
See, Judge, I like to speak when the season is given. All right.
Well, that was, I don't know if it's going to mean anything, but it was constructive.
That's better than the other one.
All right, thank you.
All right, good. And once again, on behalf of the Board, we want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and it's a Christmas tree, not a holiday tree. All right, so we want to be clear of that. And right now, we're going to move to adjourn. However.
Mr. Chair, did you just want to go through the important dates?
Oh, I'm sorry, the important dates, go ahead, I apologize.
Just December 25th, Town Hall, Town Offices are closed. January 1st, Town Offices closed. January, I'm sorry, January 1st, Town Offices closed. January 5th, Harndon Tavern Open House, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Then the January 6th through the 17th, Curbside Collection of Christmas Trees. Next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is January 13th, 7:00 PM, here in Room 9.
All right, thank you. Once again, we're going to make a motion to adjourn, go into the Town Manager's office and to sign all the common victual license, and let the press know, we could have kept you here for another hour, and any nice thing you want to say about us, that's okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Semaglia, seconded by Selectman Newhouse, are those in favor? Unanimous, and thank you, and have a nice night.